Good evening. Welcome to the State of Connecticut Commission for Child Support Guidelines Meeting today, Thursday, October 2, 2025. The roll call. Chief Esfuer Magistrate Michael Ferguson present. Attorney Graham Schaefer.
Present, Your Honor.
Attorney Carolyn Signarelli.
Present.
Senator Gary Winfield. No response. Attorney Campbell Barrett. Attorney Scott Storms. No response. Representative Cara Pavolak D'Amato. Present. Attorney Virginia Brown.
Present, Your Honor.
Attorney Amy McNamara. Absent. She's excused. Attorney Allison E. Post. Attorney Darren Perslow.
Present.
Attorney Michael Warner. He's also absent today. And Attorney Susan Hamilton.
Present, Your Honor.
All right, we do have a quorum. Now, as everyone had, the commission members had opportunity to look at the meeting minutes from September 11, 2025. Entertain a motion?
I move to adopt the minutes that were circulated from the previous meeting in September.
It's been moved and properly second. Any questions? 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 All those in favor, use a sign of voting. The aye.
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 All those opposed having the same right? Hang on, motion carries. Now we come to the point in the, um, the meeting where we have the public hearing. We have a list of people that signed up. And just so everyone knows, you have three minutes. And we will start with Cheryl Villarreal. Is, um, Cheryl present? She's not in the audience. Is she online? All right, we, um, appears to have some technical difficulties. So we'll start with, we'll come back and we'll start with the next one. Henry Marto Chiel.
Good afternoon, Commission.
Good afternoon. You have three minutes, sir.
Uh, first off, I was hoping we would get a little bit into what is actually going on with the child support guidelines here, um, because I wasn't sure. It was notified to me, um, I believe as of maybe a three day notice, but I couldn't get any technical assistance or technical guidance as to what this even committee is involved in. Um, and I would think that I would respectfully request that, that we, we figure out what is going on and what we're, we're amending here to the child support guidelines because 4DS is going to be taken away from you people very shortly. And I'm part of the people who are doing that. Um, the corruption that has occurred throughout my life with my child and family courts, um, all types of situations. I would actually say all program services and activities of the state of Connecticut involve the state actors, state players, bar associations, non-bar members, and even you, Your Honor, I would ask you, who's 28 CFR 35.107. It's been a 17 year request to me for judicial to identify even after numerous settlement agreements with the Department of Justice. This commission here as a legislative body also has a settlement agreement underneath Raymond versus Roland. Everyone continues to be non-compliant of the administrative duties of Title II, Title III. I didn't care less about Title I, which is employees of the state of Connecticut. Um, I am as another advocate aspect. Going to inform this panel here right now because again, I have no idea why this panel is convening and I could not get the technical published information that's needed to make an adequate argument, but it doesn't matter to me. We have 17 days, ladies and gentlemen, and you will be learning about the Family Justice and Accountability Act. In that Act 2025 that has been introduced in a public hearing and already has sponsorship, we're not sharing nothing with you people, just like you're doing nothing now. We have to leave the state of Connecticut to get our fundamental constitutional rights enforced by our government. Um, the state actors and state players of this court, uh, system, not only if we're going to talk about child support, there is a forced contract with threat of duration to, uh, to be arrested and your credit is destroyed. There is, again, if we look at the 1935, um, Social Security Act that gives you your funding, I'd like you, ladies and gentlemen, to read the purpose. The purpose is not defined there. And in 1935, most households were run by one parent working, any other one staying at home, taking care of their family and children. Today, upon your decrees, um, there is again a forced contract by threat. And by the way, I was a parent supposed to be getting paid. And I was told, Mr. Martacho, we don't put women in jail in the state of Connecticut. I find the whole civil system in family court not even to be considered a court system. There is no due process whatsoever within the system. Again, I am telling you now on the 17th, you ought to pay attention to what's going on at our, our, our Congress at the US Capitol. And again, um, I had to work outside the system. There's not one of my state, um, um, representatives of Congress would even talk to us about this. This is a fact of that's been going on even underneath the GAL reform that was supposed to happen in 2016. Nothing has changed. Probate courts were supposed to change. Nothing has changed. I have attorneys representing my child today. I have no concept of the name of the defendant.
If you'd like to wrap it up, I'll let you wrap it up and summarize, but your time is up, sir.
Sir, so again, I would think would be appropriate for this panel to explain what we're even convening for on the child support guideline commission. What are we investigating? Did I miss something last year? Did I miss the appointment of this commission? Can you please identify, sir? I am a public person asking for information and advising this committee that it doesn't matter because the way our bill is written in Congress, which we use case law that gives yourselves the absolute immunity since 1870. We stripped out of that, you too, Your Honor, just to let you know. We the people never gave the bar so it's immediate.
You're well over, but thank you. Do any of the commission members have any questions for the gentleman? Saying none. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the next, uh, person that signed up. Anna Cambridge. Is Anna Cambridge present?
Hello, I am present.
Hello. Uh, you have three minutes. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Commission. Um, my name is Anna Cambridge and I am a resident of Hartford, Connecticut, and I am in agreeance with, um, Henry. Um, I am not aware of, um, why the panel is convening. Um, however, I do know that it's been quite some time since there have been any updates to the Connecticut, um, child support guidelines, um, with the year being in 2005. Um, that was 19 years ago. I was 17 at the time. Fast forward to now, um, 19 years later, I am 37 years old, a proud mother of three beautiful children who I have not seen unfortunately since March of 2023 because the great state of Connecticut improperly modified a foreign out of state custody decree from the great state of, um, California. And rather than honoring the Constitution under the full and faith credit clause, um, for recognizing court orders from sister states, Connecticut turned the other cheek to allow any access or visitation to my children. However, the great state of Connecticut did not turn the other cheek when it came to finding me, harassing me, threatening me for child support. I already had a child support order from another state and I tried to present that to the Connecticut state. And rather than being heard, I was ignored and I was, like I said, threatened with inter rearage. I was threatened with my license getting suspended. I was getting threatened with a, a wage of garnishment, but the whole time I hadn't seen my children. They had no ear for my voice when it came to the family court, but Connecticut definitely had their ears wide open when it came to collecting child support. And so Connecticut erred when they did not honor the order from California, but rather used federal programs from another state, multiple states to find me, locate me when I was fully present the whole entire time. Hello, here is respondent mother Anna Cambridge, pro se litigant, trying to gain access to her children, but then I was deemed, um, um, what, what is the word? Unable to find, unable to locate me? How is that? That's contradicting if I'm present and in, in the courtroom, but then the child support agency is saying I'm unable to locate and serve, but then I'm getting threatened with, um, my license getting suspended, like I said, arrears. Um, so none of this makes sense. So I feel that this commission needs to really analyze what is going on and what is the true root of, of, of the problem. Um, and that is federal funding supporting state programs. Like we should not be, the states should not be receiving federal money for state to be able to run the state. These are some of the reasons why people like me and many, many others are not having access to their children, but are getting threatened left and right from the federal program.
All right, Miss, um, you're over the time. If you'd like to summarize, you may do so.
Um, my summary is my name is Anna Cambridge. I am the mother of the children that the great state of Connecticut has denied me access to, yet has no problem coming after me for a penny. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Uh, the next person on the list is Natasha Pers- Persaud. Tasha Persaud, P E R S A U D. She on the, uh, not, we don't see her. She's not on. We'll go to the next person. Uh, Dennis Johnson?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Um, good evening, sir. You have three minutes. You may begin.
Uh, thank you for this opportunity to share my experience with this committee. Child support guidelines are a mystery to me and I'm sure others as well. The gatekeepers of the Connecticut, um, guidelines seem to be the family services departments, attorneys and judges. We the people are at their mercy and must trust their honesty. I for one have suffered lifelong hardship for what I perceive as a flawed design. In 2010, our newborn child was taken out of Connecticut and I was ordered to pay child support despite losing my career, my home, all my retirement accounts and all investment due to false allegations, but no conviction. At the age of 55, I lost everything I worked for my entire life, yet I still had to pay quite a lot of, uh, child support by selling everything I owned. Fast forward now to 2015, when I became the primary custodial parent and retained a law firm two years later in 2017 to modify the order of, uh, the child support order so I could stop paying child support and get child support from the non-custodial parent. The attorney who represented me drew up an unclear agreement with the child services department that stopped me from paying child support, but I unwillingly gave up my right to collect child support. No one told me, the gatekeepers did not inform me that I would not be getting child support. Therefore, for the next seven years, I went without child support with no known remedy to recoup the large amount of expenses and missing child support for nine plus years of being a sole parent. Fast forward to 2024 and, uh, when I relinquished my primary custody to the other parent and now face as a senior, 69, very serious health issues, abandonment and child support payments. My motion to modify child support sits in the court with no action being taken while I diligently continue to pay child support despite all other court orders being ignored and not being enforced by the court. I submit that child support should be tied to other court orders such as visitation. My message to this committee is common sense and transparency are missing from the process. We have no idea how the child support guidelines work. And when an inquiry is made, I've been told numerous times, it's complex and computer generated. There needs to be built in considerations for deviations. Do the guidelines take into consideration the potential earnings of the other party? Do the guidelines ignore why one parent elects to work part-time or not at all? Does the process require the financial affidavits to, to be supported with documentation? I have advocated for shared parenting, but the other party refuses to co-parent. If one parent refuses to co-parent, there should be a penalty. The guidelines should consider shared parenting or the refusal to co-parent and verify income of both parties and take into account potential income for those who elect not to work. Consideration of the quality of life of all people involved should be addressed. Gender roles need to be ignored. No parent should be hoodwinked into giving, giving up their rights to child support and there should be a remedy. Finally, there should be a child support calculator that allows parents to input numbers and get an idea of what they're up against and somehow in some sort of deviation or verifiable circumstances. Thank you very much for your time and this opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Well.
The next person on the list is Maria McKinian. Is Maria present?
Yes, I am present. Um, I'm just trying to unmute.
All right. Good evening. And you have three minutes. May I start now?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, all of you commission members. I served on the commission before, so I know how much work you're putting into it and I appreciate all the, the work you have been doing. Um, with that, I'd just like to give a couple of comments that might help, um, people understand the, the guidelines better and help the courts understand them better. Um, one of my first comments is the effective date of the new regulations. And I don't know if you can answer this yet. Um, do you have an effective date of the new regulations yet? And is it going to be after? I understand it has to go through the legislative process and have you contemplated when you might make them effective, assuming it goes through this next legislative session? Um, and I don't know if you can answer questions or if you're just taking comments.
Well, actually, we're just taking comments at this.
Okay, okay. Um, so if you could make clear in some of your regulations, one of the, one of the first things I'd ask is the schedule that falls in the middle of it, it looks like the scheduled, you know, of all the amounts for whatever reason, it falls in the middle of the regulations. I know we dealt with this the last time and they just decided to leave it the way it is, but I'd, I'd ask if you'd consider moving it to the end of the chart because it falls in the middle of all the language and a lot of people get confused. They think the regulations end once they see the charts and they don't realize a lot of the deviation criteria and things like that are at the end. So I'd ask if you'd consider maybe moving it to the back so that people don't get confused. Um, as far as, uh, let's see. Oh, I'd also ask if you would put a reference to 52 dash 362B in there, which is the statute that says that the courts shall automatically withdraw child support from the employer's, um, paycheck unless they make a finding on the record that it's in the best interest of the child not to do so. I have yet to find a court that understands that this statute even exists. Um, and, um, it's, it's been very difficult because you take a lot of time doing it and they, when they, uh, miss it and it doesn't come out that way, you have to do a motion to reconsider or appeal or, you know, whatever. And obviously you don't want to appeal over something like that, but I think it would make it a lot easier. It also helps the court system if they do automatically withdraw it from the employer paycheck. You don't have the issues of contempt motions come up because when someone doesn't pay their child support and they end up having to file a contempt motion, it's all on the obligee who has to do that. And they incur legal expense, which almost never is paid as in, in a contempt motion, if, if contempt is even found, um, but they almost never pay the legal fees. So it's part, puts the obligee in the position of not getting the money and making a difficult barrier to overcome to get the money. So, and it, it's some of it is lack of education by the courts and even the, um, the child support people that receive it. So if we could put that statute in there, I would hope it would help, um, alleviate that. Um, the next comment I have is, let's see, I'm trying to go in order of the regulations. In, on page 39, there's a reference and throughout, there's a couple of references to dependency benefits. It is not a capitalized item. I know it refers to the social security definition on page seven, but the way it's used in the regulation, it just refers to dependency benefits. And one might think that has something to do with if you're getting, um, you know, um, some sort of welfare benefits or, um, anything like that. One would not know it goes together with this definition without doing that. So I'm just wondering if you could just clarify that and either capitalize dependency benefits or make a reference to the definition on page seven, having to do with social security. Uh, if that's found on page 39, when I, when I go down on the, um, the pages aren't numbered, but if I slide down on the Adobe worksheet, it's on page 79.
Your time is up. If you can, um, rise and wrap up. Thank you.
Um, okay. So the other thing is the, the deviation criteria, um, the gross versus net, uh, I mean, um, the deviation criteria where it has shared custody. A lot of people are getting this mixed up and a lot of courts are getting it mixed up and there needs a lot more clarity in that, um, to understand that just because you have shared custody, it's not an automatic deviation. And it has happened many, many times where, and we see it in the appellate court rulings and it's just not clear. So if we could clarify that, um, and if we could, um, consider doing gross versus instead of net, um, net income because so many times people are using their mortgage, um, and other deductions they get that lowers their income. And then the day after, um, it happens, then after the award is given, it changes everything. So it's really, um, something I'd ask you to seriously consider. It would make it so much easier that we'd all be on the same page instead of the game. of the games that get played as far as gross in, income. And the last thing I had is the imputation of income. The 32 hours is very good. I appreciate that, um, and the, the details. And I think, oh, I'm sorry, there was one more item. Under the share, uh, the deviation criteria where you said two parents, whenever there's two parents, it sounds like the court can do whatever they want without it being sort of in the best interest of the child or whatever. And I wonder if you might consider putting, putting something in there that sort of modifies it to say in the best interest, um, of the child. They can't just, two parents doesn't, just doesn't give the court free rein to do whatever they want. Um, so I'd ask if you would consider doing that. And if you don't have any other, too many people in line and you have extra time at the end of the hearing, would you consider allowing a few more minutes to anyone?
Well, the, the, uh, thank you for your, your, your comments, but the other thing is, we're also accepting written comments, and, um, based on what you said today, you may want to submit something in writing as well with the other issues that you were talking about and possibly want to talk about, but thank.
Is there an email address that you would like them sent to?
Yes, one moment.
Hi, Attorney McKeon. Yes, you can submit those. There's information on the e-regulation system about where to submit comments. You can actually submit them directly through the e-regulation system for Connecticut. Um, if you pull up this proposed regulation, you can also send them to my email address, which is listed.
I have that.
Public notice there that you can hold very easily.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
And I should mention the close of the public comment period is actually October 19th, so you have some time.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, and thank you. Um, we're gonna try to go back to, uh, Cheryl Villarreal. I believe that's the one was having difficulty logging on. Anything? Still no? All right. And the other, the other person we missed was Natasha Persaud. Is she on? All right. Is there anyone, is there anyone else in the audience or that may be, uh, participating remotely? Don't see anything. All right, we're gonna take a short recess just to see what's going on with the people trying to get in. All right, um, we're back from the recess. We tried to wait to see if there's anyone, uh, going to log on or or appear in person. Seeing none, this will conclude the meeting. Um, thank you, everyone.